Still says it's preparing on my end, even though that.
Yeah, on our screens, it shows that it's streaming live on YouTube.
All right, now I think we're all. Ready to go, Rick.
Okay, I'd like to call our planning meeting to order, acknowledge that the press and public are duly notified in accordance with state law. First order of business is approval of the minutes for November 12th, 2020.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve those.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, so goes approved. New business, review the Waterway Boulevard path elevation project. Doug, that's all yours.
Hey, I'm gonna try to share my screen here in a second, but.
Oh, good.
Just for the benefit of the group, because I don't, I can't recall how much we've talked about this project, but this project really came about as a result of discussions of repaving the multi-use path on Waterway Boulevard. The, the point was made that, you know, at the same time, we were trying to choose kind of the magic elevation for the outfall project that was adjacent to that path. And the idea came about that, well, you know, could we kind of in a cost-effective manner, could we add a little bit of elevation to that bike path? And, and be able to create more protection for those properties on the backside of the island. So we entered into an agreement with Thomas and Hutton to study that question and basically to, to figure out if it could be done, and if so, what the cost would be, and then analyze the cost benefit of doing it, you know, to see the level of protection it would provide versus the cost that it would, that it would take to get us there. So they have, they have done that, they have kind of looked at the modeling of that area. Their advice was to make the target elevation six feet above mean sea level. And they felt like that kind of provided a sweet spot of practical application. Basically, they could reasonably engineer it without breaking the bank. And also provide a pretty meaningful additional level of protection for the backside of the island. So at the Public Works Committee meeting that Rick, I think Rick, that's the one that Rick saw, and he felt like it would be good to kind of relay that information to you all. They made that presentation and the Public Works Committee at that meeting signed off on the elevation of six being the target elevation. So they now have gone into kind of a little bit deeper dive on the cost of what that would take. So Thomas and Hutton is now working on developing the cost and they're going to report back of, you know, what that, what that expense will ultimately come out to. And I'm gonna see, I'm gonna try to share this. Hopefully that's coming up on your.
Yep.
And you will see, and it's, and I know it's small, but we'll zoom in a bit, and you'll see water, well, just enlarged it, I think it. So if you can visualize that path along Waterway Boulevard, and, and we, and I have another screen that shows that's kind of current day projections, and what you're seeing there in blue is if high tides were to get to an elevation of six feet with a storm or some surge or something else, the areas in blue would be inundated with water at that elevation.
What do you mean by inundated?
It would, it would back up through the ditch system and overwhelm the ditch edges and end up, you would have standing water in all of the areas there that are shown in shaded blue.
So it would be something like a foot deep or half a foot deeper?
Well, I don't have that, but yeah, I think, you know, I don't think it would be, well, I guess it would be different elevations at different locations.
Inundated is a big word.
Yeah, yeah, the depth, I don't have the depth on here of what each elevation gets. And then if you, if you were to, so this is the, and then I think it'll take the screen just a second to get up to speed. But this is what happens if they elevate that path to six feet. And this is a little section right now on my screen, hopefully it's also on your screen, it's showing 21st Avenue to roughly 28th Avenue.
Right.
And the parts that are shown in dashed red have to be elevated some amount. So it would be kind of a bermed up, the, the bike path in that section would be bermed up. And then the little white text boxes indicate some type of additional control, so. And generally, those additional controls are tide gates at each of the outfalls. So I think that every outfall gets a tide gate under this scenario. And I'm just gonna, hopefully it will kind of go down the. But a lot of the path actually is already high enough, and I think that's why they, they do get into very complicated engineering scenarios where they do have to elevate the path because the, the challenge is to allow water to only flow off the island and not, and, and off the, not into the road, basically. So where they elevate that path, they have to, they have to create a method to get the water off of the road and onto the other side of that berm. So that, this is again, this is the section from 30th down to approximately Forest Trail. And it gets more and more challenging the closer you get to 41st Avenue.
Now, let me ask a question. Looking at this, I see a yellow line and then a red line and a yellow line, red line, yellow. Does this mean that once the sidewalk has been fixed, that'll be a flat sidewalk? Won't have hills and valleys?
So the, so the sections that are in red on this map would be elevated some amount. And then, and actually here, we're looking, on this particular map, I just know from walking with the engineers, this is the section that requires the most elevation around Forest Trail. And it kind of makes sense that this, this area also is where Waterway does actually occasionally spill over in Waterway Boulevard.
But that would mean, but that would mean elevating the sidewalk to meet the yellow sidewalk.
That's correct.
The yellow and the red would then be the same elevation.
That's correct. Well, so that, so the yellow in spaces is actually considerably higher than six.
Okay.
The yellow could, or, yellow is already at or above six.
Okay.
Red would be brought up, is currently below six and would be brought up to six.
And the, the flood docks or the check valves, where would they be located?
At the, at the end of, well, either at the end of each pipe where it discharges into the intercoastal waterway or at the intersection of Waterway Boulevard.
No.
So yes, I mean, part of this plan is, is really drawing the line at Waterway Boulevard, so. Rick, properties like yours that are on the other side of Waterway would, would not be, they wouldn't benefit from this project.
Right.
So Thomas and Hutton through their, through this mapping is estimating, and I think the number is 215 houses would be gaining, or yes, 215 houses would be gaining protection from this project that they don't, that they wouldn't get without it. And the big kind of question mark on this whole project is what does that protection cost? And is it all, you know, that they have provided, and I actually, I don't think I've provided it to you, but they, they did provide a frequency chart. And it is showing that these properties or that, that Waterway is reaching that magic elevation of six or above. Here in recent years, it's been, I think the number was seven or eight times. So we're getting, it's an elevation that we're getting to pretty regularly today, and I think we all kind of expect that we're gonna get there more and more frequently into the future. So it would provide some meaningful protection now. I think the idea is that going forward, it would be providing, you know, protection more frequently than it, than it currently is. And then, of course, once you get to above six, even with this project, so, you know, a major storm, a Hurricane Hugo level storm, it's gonna overwhelm this project and, and basically it, the water will still inundate past Waterway Boulevard. So that's it in a nutshell. I mean, there's still the big question of how much it's gonna all cost, and they're working through that now. And if the cost is, and it may be that we, the city plans on doing it at some point in the future and, and builds the outfall infrastructure to assume it's gonna be there, and then maybe we build it over time. And all of that will kind of be worked out and, and hinge obviously heavily on the cost to do this project. Any questions about that?
Douglas, when you said that it, this is happening, the flooding in that area, did you say seven to eight times per year, or was that?
Just in, in recent years, so we've.
Recent years, yeah.
Yeah, we've had, you know, and it's, they gave me a, and I think their chart went back five years. And it was all of the major storms that we all kind of have on our radars. But it's, it's hitting, it's hitting that trigger, I would say, at least every year now.
Frequently.
Yeah.
And Douglas, along with that, what, what kind of, are those storms doing permanent damage, or is it, the water sits for a few days, or what, what, what's the ramifications of the surge?
Well, I will tell you that in my personal opinion, when you look at that initial map that we showed on the screen.
Yep.
I don't think that the water is, is backing up to all of those. I could be wrong, I mean, I don't, I don't live in those properties, but to my knowledge, all of those that are shown with a blue highlight on them, I don't think that all of those are getting water onto them at those.
Right. And I think to, I think to Rick's point, how, how deep, how long, and I'm not trying to downplay the issue, it's just, there's some, there's some quantification that might help. And, and with the drainage projects that are going in, will that mitigate any of this?
No, we're not, as it's been planned, it would not. So, so if, if you don't do this, or if the, if the city doesn't do this, it, it will not get, it will not protect these properties that are shown in, in highlights.
The new drainage projects won't address any of this, is what you're saying.
That's correct. They, they provide, and I think, I think the, the current elevation is, you know, somewhere around four, but it's kind of just normal high tides that they're accounting for. It's not this additional surge and, and backflowing into the, into the rest of the system. And I don't think, you know, it's, it's an interesting, after these storms, you know, part of what my department does is we try to locate structural damage after these storms, and we have, we have three, three or four properties that we are aware of, that we know kind of get damaged every time we have one of these properties. I mean, I'm sorry, one of these events or storms. There are not, you know, as I said, I think there's some 215 properties in this highlighted map. We don't have 215 houses being damaged. I mean, a lot of them are already elevated. You know, so they have, they have crawl space or they're on a significant crawl space. So it is very, to your point, it's very tough to quantify. And that's been, quite frankly, the big challenge for Thomas and Hutton, is we, we have asked them to give us, you know, kind of the, a report card on the bang for the buck that we would get for this project, and I think they're still working on that. But I think the data is fairly scarce, and it's a lot of, it's a lot of guesswork on their end. If we don't have it, I mean, at the building department, we know that they're not getting damaged to a point where it's obviously apparent to the building official who's driving around that work is being done. You know, we have to kind of assume that it's, it's not significant damage.
Have they given you any ballpark on range of costs for something like this?
No.
Or is it just?
They haven't yet, and, and again, all of the kind of impetus on this was the fact that the existing path is going to be redone already, and that was in the budget to do that work. And the thought was, well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna already go ahead and do that paving, you know, couldn't we quite easily elevate it, you know, put some fill under the paving before we, we do it? And it may be, like I said, it may be that parts are very easily done. And we do that when we, that we design the outfall project to this new elevation, that we kind of pick the low hanging fruit and do the parts of this project that are very cost effective at this point. And I do know on that section that we, it gets very kind of complex down here, where we have driveways that would need berms within the driveway. It gets to, you know, something in the, in the neighborhood of an 18-inch berm down in this section. So it might be that if that's just too, too costly at this time, that we, we hold that part of the project till a future date. So I think all will be revealed when the price, pricing starts to come in. You know, is it, is it a relatively minor expense to fold into this bigger multimillion dollar project? Or is it not?
You know, not to belabor the point, but I did a project similar to this in Cali, Columbia. Only it was much larger, much bigger. But the, the thing I learned about doing this, it was that if you put up a berm to block water, it's very different than just putting up a hill on a sidewalk. Yeah, it's a trapezoid. And the, the dimensions are basically fixed by engineering standards. And it turns out that the base of the, of the wall is very broad, so this, the, it's kind of a shallow hill going up to the top of the, of the berm. So it's just something to consider, that you could wind up with a very, very wide sidewalk in order to be officially as a retention wall. Just a thought. So it's not, you know, it's not logical at first. It doesn't seem that you have to do that, but the reality is you do.
Yeah. And I know that they've, you know, we have wanted that path widened anyway. It's a fairly narrow path, so that was just kind of something that we wanted to do independent of this project is widen it. And so that was, I mean, you're bringing up a point of concern that they also had, it was, well, if you, if you widen the path already, and then you're starting to berm it up in places, and it starts to become a bigger project, and they're obviously existing impediments in place. I mean, people's driveways, trees, the road, a curve in the road, so.
Fire trucks.
Yeah. So they're, like I said, they are kind of working through those details right now to figure out how costly it will be.
Douglas, I, I have a question too. When I think of a berm, you know, if water comes up over the top of the berm, is it also gonna get trapped because it has no way to get back out?
Yes. Well, and, and even if it, even if it doesn't come over the berm, you have rain that falls on the other side of the berm that has to get to the outfall, so it has to get into a drainage system just to get off the road.
So how is that, is that part of this engineering that's gonna?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think there, I think that all of these issues that we're describing are in play, and they are in play in this section that's on your screen right now. Those houses that are kind of backing up to the golf course, there's a low dip in the. So I, I do think it's a fairly small area that we have all of these complicated issues, but nonetheless, it gets very complicated in this portion of the, and, and that is also what drove them to choose six instead, because I, you know, I kind of kept saying, well, why, if we go to six, why can't we just go to seven? And they had to set me straight that there, it's a huge, it is a huge delta once you get over six. And it gets, you know, exponentially more complicated.
Actually, the berms that I built, I had to, I had to layer, I had to use different types of soil at different elevations. And so I had a standard berm of about six feet high, two meters. And I used, had to use three different types of soil. Yeah, I had to actually dig out first and put in a base soil, clay soil, non-permeable, non-permeable soil, and then build on top of that to get the sidewalk where actually what it was, it was a road. So it's, it's, it's not, I thought it was simple. When I flew down there and looked at it, I said, this is a piece of cake.
Yeah.
And I wound up staying there for three months, so.
Well, I do think that they are, you know, in talking with them about the design, they are, it will be a much lower, at the very tallest, I think it's, like I said, I think it's about 18 inches. But I do think that, you know, even 18 inches on a very flat island creates, can create a lot of complications.
But in order to get insurance or local government happiness and all that other kind of stuff, it's gotta be done according to engineering standards. It can't be dirt on top, you know, just pour more dirt on a sidewalk kind of thing.
That's the way I envision these things. I, I, I love to oversimplify in my mind. Just put some dirt down and go, but apparently it doesn't work well.
Doesn't work well.
All right, any other questions on that?
No, that's good.
So we'll see. That, like I said, this one is in the, in the ether, and it's kind of bouncing around, and, and no firm decisions have been made on that, so we'll, it's still being considered. So I'll keep you abreast of what changes with that.
Okay. Old business. Or wait, do we have anything else on that?
No.
Old business, review community facilities element of comprehensive plan.
All right, first, first of all, I apologize for getting that out so late. And I, and there are still parts of it that there are the police department and the fire department need to update their portions of that element. The water and sewer staff has looked at it, they, they are kind of agreeable to how the draft is written. They didn't see any, any need to change. I hope that as we left this, we had gone through the goals and strategies. My, and I hope that what was in the draft kind of reflects the conversations that we had about the goals and strategies. And I would just, I'm assuming that probably not many of you have had a chance to fully digest it, and I would say that, you know, you're gonna get, we're gonna come back to this, so this is certainly not a final pass on any of this. But I would, I was just gonna, kind of flip through the draft of the text and highlight the editorial, what I think are kind of editorial changes, if that's okay with everybody.
Sure.
So like there was a fair amount of detail on the 911 center, so we've, we've scaled that back just a little bit. I think that's less kind of poignant than it was at the last, at the last time of the draft. Water sources has not really changed. I mean, that, our water kind of comes from the same place now as it did then. Wastewater treatment, that's one where I feel like, and we talked about this, that I felt like we did need some additional text there to just describe all of the planning commission's work on, in 2015 to 2017. And that paragraph, I think there's a paragraph on, on my draft, it's in the middle of page 35 of the comprehensive plan. There's two paragraphs there. That one, I think the, the intent there was to, to basically capture the fact that you will spend a lot of work on it for several years. Ultimately, the conclusion was made that getting everybody on sewer was important, but that it couldn't necessarily be done all at once. And that instead, there would be this strategy of a gradual expansion over time until it's completely built out. And then also just a paragraph to describe that there is a master plan out there, and that the Water and Sewer Commission have kind of jointly agreed that we have a shared goal of expanding the sewer to every property on the island. So that, I would say that's kind of a bulk of the, that's an important change that I'd want you to, want you to kind of look at and give your comments to when you have a chance to do that.
Yeah, since I won't. Could we say something in here like a policy of encouragement? We'll have an overall policy of encouragement.
In the description of the city.
In the plan, yeah.
Well, so the text says the city needed, the, the planning commission concluded that the city needed to plan to expand the sewer system.
Right.
You wanna kind of expand on that sentence?
Yeah, just another sentence, just basically saying that we will have a, a policy of encouragement. In other words, no matter how this happens, no matter how long it takes, in the meantime, we'll be using our ordinances to tighten up and encourage people to tie in. Rather than waiting for the big day where everybody gets the tie in.
Yes, okay. So not, not only do we need to expand, but we need to basically create, create a framework that encourages.
Right. So in other words, if this, if this big plan never really makes it, we never can really afford it, or for whatever reason, it never happens, we still have the underlying encouragement program taking place, which is gonna slowly but surely, you know.
Get more and more people on.
Right.
Okay, I think that, I think that fits nicely in the, ultimately, the planning commission concluded that the city needed to plan to expand the sewer. And then I, I would just work in there and develop a framework that encourages people to tie in.
Yep.
Okay, I can do that. And again, I know you all haven't had much time to look at this, so. And Rick, and Vince, you're obviously always, you can always comment, even if you're not on this call in January. It would always be.
We'd never do that.
Right.
Yes, you will.
The, I did take out language in there. There was a fair amount of language, you know, kind of implicating that sewer expansion should really only be done when it could be justified by health standards. And I think we deviated from that. I mean, I think that was kind of the old position, and I, I think we've pivoted away from that, so I took that language out. Yeah, there was also, you know, general kind of description of the Water and Sewer Commission's challenges in improving noise and odor, which I think is now fairly outdated comment. So that brings us to the, the next section, stormwater drainage. This is also one that we felt like needed to be updated to reflect more recent efforts there. And we've done a lot on storm, stormwater. Tried to kind of cram in several years of work into two paragraphs that are at the bottom of page 37 for me.
Right.
We talk about the project in 2018. Uh, we talk about the project in twenty eighteen. Um, of expanding stormwater system to the areas between forty fifth and fifty second avenue. And then just a paragraph to capture the work that's currently underway in twenty twenty. Developing this third phase of sealing off the tidal inundation between forty first and thirtieth. And improving the outfall. The outfalls associated there. Again. Welcome comments now or later, or if that doesn't go far enough, or if we want to.
Douglas, I hate to backtrack us on the electrical and telephone. Is that um? Is that really, we haven't really spent a whole lot of time on that, but there seems to be quite a bit of complaint about the telecom service on the island. Maybe I'm just. Imagining it. But um, you know, when we talk, this, this looks like it's more been written in accordance with old landlines versus.
Yeah.
Cellular and internet training, you know, this, it looks like it's kind of dated.
I would.
And I'm, I'm wondering if we really shouldn't spend some time, um, we don't have to do it on this call, but maybe come back to it just as a placeholder. Really update this to uh, it's more internet um, access, data access. Wireless access. And I think that everything I hear is that there's a. Um, a race to the bottom between T-Mobile, AT&amp;T and Verizon out here. Yeah. As far as service quality.
Yeah, this, this section has, in my mind, has remained unchanged since the original conference of plan in nineteen ninety five. Uh, and at a minimum. Uh, I see S E and G is there instead of Dominion, but I think you're probably right that um. Maybe we would exchange, we would expand that to be electrical telephone. And then potentially internet.
I call it, yeah, I, I almost call it electric telecom instead of telephone and uh, data services. Or cable and data, data services, because it's, it's uh, you know, cable services are, it's, it's the same thing. And whoever's going to be the, either internet provider, wireless or hard wire is going to be the. They're going to be the most critical um, sources on the island.
Term telecom and.
Instead of telephone, yeah, telecom.
And, and then.
Data services.
Data services, data services.
And that captures cellular and LAN?
Well, cellular would be telecom, but what's, there's a crossover now because you've got your five G, you've got your satellite, you've got all that. So you've got, you've got a crossover between telecom providers and the data services, which are your internet and cable providers.
Okay.
So they're all um, you know, we, we can work on the title, but I think electrical telephone has probably become obsolete.
Yeah, okay. And then would you, you know, we are currently and we, and we have just um, modified. The city's code to address this, these five G antennas, you know, the small. The kind of small wires that are the small antennas that can just go on telephone poles. Or power poles, I guess.
Are those going to, are those going to be leased to the providers? Or is that a, that can be a little bit of a revenue generator?
Well, it's not, not for the city. I, you know, the poles belong to S E and G, whether or not each provider is going to pay.
They'll probably pay, they'll probably pay a lease fee or yeah, to be on those poles.
Yeah. So the city hasn't been involved with the revenue side of it, but we have been involved with the, you know, currently the city zoning code addresses cell towers. And, and in the traditional sense of the cell tower was a hundred and forty foot tall. Uh, tower where now it's going to be just a, like a suitcase on a, on a.
A lot, but a lot of them, yeah.
Right.
And they got their line, their line of sight, I think, yeah. Um, what's, I just care, this is kind of a sidebar question. What, what's all that on the, on the water towers? Is that all of them?
Yes, that is all um. That's all cellular providers.
Okay, that's wired, okay.
And that's, you know, that, as I understand it, that is the sole purpose of that tower at this point. You know, they, they wanted several years ago, they wanted to transition away from the water tower. Into a traditional cell tower. Uh, but there was. There was a strong reaction to that. They, so basically that, that water tower as it stands is not much.
Is the cell tower, yeah.
Just being a cell tower. And then we have them at forty first avenue and we have them at the boardwalk inn in Wild Dunes.
You know, two things, um, while walking the dogs, we, we came across a contractor and we struck up a conversation. Uh, asking him how his business was doing. And it turns out. Uh, he had been doing fairly well, but he um. Put out a little blurb on Facebook or somewhere about converting bedrooms to offices. And right now he's oversold. He cannot keep up with the business of. He has an electrician, um, a team, basically carpenter, electrician, a painter. And they go in and convert your bedroom to a, to an office.
Right.
And so, and I, and I said, what about on the Isle of Poms? He said, it's, it's happening all over the island. People are putting in, you know, are doing this conversion because a lot of the homes have three or four bedrooms and are only using one or two anyway.
Right.
But um, that I think tells us that the style, the style of life here is going to slightly change, I think. More and more.
Yeah, that whole WFH work from home model is just kind of, it's exploding.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is just going to put more demand on, on all those carriers.
Exactly, yep.
Yep. So would the um. I think that's an excellent point. And I think, yeah, I mean, that's, that we're seeing that the more and more folks are getting. Um, home occupation business licenses each year and it's, each year it's, it used to be kind of a rarity. Now it's kind of. Everybody is, seems to be doing it.
One of my neighbors, one of my neighbors lived on that, on the loop. Uh, in, in DC. Working in DC and now he can work from home and he, they sold their house like overnight in DC and moved here. You know what that, we've all been there.
Yeah, oh yeah.
And uh. Now his life is good. Outside of the restaurants aren't always open, but life is good compared to what it was like up there, so.
So would this.
Unless the carriers keep expanding their capacity out here, um.
We're going to.
Yeah, it's going to start choking. It already is choking.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing, policy be to basically. Encourage or. Somehow. Try to ensure that cellular connectivity is as good as it can be.
Yeah, there's, there, there probably are some ways to work with the carriers directly. I don't know how much the city has done that in the past. The issue I think we have as a barrier island. Is that we're going to be last on the list because of density. For um, these companies to want to put their latest and greatest technology out here. On the other hand. Uh, you know, because of the, some of the demographics and some people working out here, there might be a little bit more encouragement if the demand's there. So there, there'll be more high end packages probably bought out here. Um, and then you got the seasonal demands because of all the people coming out here on the beach, but.
I converted, I converted from uh, from coax to fiber.
Yeah.
And it's fabulous. I mean, it's fast, it's hot, it's reliable.
What, what do you have? Do you have the U-verse package, the AT&amp;T package?
Yes. Yeah, I, I have T-Mobile for the uh, for the phones. And it's great. I mean, things have really been, really been running hot, so.
Yeah. We have to go to certain rooms to get cellular cover sometimes. Depends on what day it is.
Yeah, exactly, or if it's raining.
If it's, if it's, if it's a, if it's a beach day, the, the, the service is a little more degraded.
Scott, are you Verizon?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and I think.
I've got some, I've got some loyalties there, probably, yeah.
I have loyalty.
Well, we. He, this is, we're probably going too far down a rabbit hole, but the, it has always been a, an issue with. An additional um, antenna on that water tower that has just been kind of. Freed up in the last few months. So there should be, so currently you're, I think you're going to the nearest tower, which is. Uh, the Marina for, for you. And there should be soon an additional tower on the um.
Oh, you're saying Verizon's putting one up here or whatever. Yeah, a lot of times they'll share, they can share some of those towers too. There are ways that they do that.
We, because we have awful, we're, you know, we're Verizon and, and parts of City Hall and it doesn't work, so.
Yeah, transceiver, but Verizon transceiver in your parking lot?
Yes, that was, that, that um. That trailer was to fill that gap during the busy seasons because it got, it kind of got so bad.
So they leave, they take it away when.
Tower on the water tower in the next few months.
That's great.
And maybe, you know, maybe that in the comprehensive plan, we just address it in such a way and we can, you know, maybe we take it off and table it and come back to it, but sort of how do we identify the key, uh, key carriers? How can we work with them to ensure that we're getting the most bandwidth out here that we possibly can? And then there, if there are service issues, how can we be not last in line to get any attention out here?
Well, it's, it's interesting from the, from the planning world, I can tell you that, you know, cities initially. Kind of did everything in their power to keep cell towers from going up because they were seeing. Ron, is it, I wonder how long Ron's been in the waiting room?
Hey, Ron.
But everything was done with a, with an eye, with a mindset of minimizing the visual obstruction of all the cell towers.
You mean just the eye star kind of thing or?
Yes. So, you know, it required that everybody tried to co-locate and, and. And spread their signal between towers, as few towers as they could. And I think that that mind shift now with the reliance that we all have on cell towers very well, probably has shifted to, you know. Put them where you need to make it work because we really need to make it work.
Yeah, well, like you said, five G is going to take that. It's going to maybe be higher density, lower uh, probably altitudes and just more of them.
Yeah. Sorry, Ron, you have.
I didn't, I didn't, hey, I didn't mean to pull us back to that. This, I took us backwards, I apologize.
Ron, were you in the.
Sorry, I'm late.
You weren't.
No, no, I, I was running late on another meeting and. Tried to do it on my cellphone, but I couldn't get the link.
Okay, well, we, I, I saw you in the waiting room and I hadn't looked over there for a minute and could have been in there for twenty minutes and went unnoticed. We were just, uh, Ron, we were just, um, we kind of went over the drainage project at the beginning of the meeting. We're now. Going through the community facilities um, changes. And I think we, we were just talking a little bit about cell uh. The. Right now it's, it's entitled electrical telephone section. And we think that there would be a need to just broaden it to better cover kind of cellular issues and data issues. The point's been made that it probably is. It's inadequate maybe out here currently and that maybe we need to um, adopt a posture of being. Um, supportive of efforts that would improve data services and telecommunications out here.
Certainly. Well, if you want, Douglas, I can, maybe I can take a crack work with you on some language here and come, we can come back and revisit with a goal or a strategy or two or strategy or goal or two.
If you're willing to do that, Scott. You know, I said, for the benefit of everybody, I included the Word document. If you wouldn't, if you have comments that you'd like to just. Edit, just use that Word document and track the changes. And send them to me. Uh, that would be much appreciated. Um, I think we had touched on the stormwater. Um, efforts here recently.
Yep.
Parks and recreation and public properties section remain unchanged from our conversations. Water.
Should we, oh, we talked about this before, I guess. I jumped the gun.
Go ahead.
Adding the public space of the Marina.
Oh, yeah.
No.
So um. Rick, are you saying include a blurb in the public properties? Or you're, you're saying maybe more of a strategy?
Well, including it in parks and recreation that it, that we've done it, we've committed to it. And that, you know, going down the road, we'd like to continue to grow it somehow. For the first time, we've got waterfront property that's available to residents, right?
Should it be in both sections, Rick? In the um. It is a public property.
Yep.
Yeah, the Marina is, is talked about. I'm wondering if that needs to be, if we need to, because right now the Marina is. Discussed in the public properties.
Right.
But I think you're saying. Um. Add something in the park section.
Yes.
But I think we also need to address it in the. Section on the Marina.
I tell you what, would somebody like to take a crack at that? And so we're not kind of editing on the. On the fly and send it to me?
What is it that you want to say?
Well, that, we, we were talking about the parks and recreation that we have on the island already, right?
Right.
We just added a, a space that's uh, on the waterfront. It's going to be for public. Little fishing pier and whatever else, benches and umbrellas, you know, similar. I think it should be mentioned as an entity in and of itself because it's, it's kind of unique to us.
And, and then wouldn't that show up in water access also?
Could.
Yeah, could.
Well, I think that's, I think it's there now, well. Five marinas are on the island.
Okay, okay, got it.
So I think the water access is there.
Is there, all right.
All right, Rick, I think I see what you're saying. At the um. Basically that in the final pair, add a paragraph to parks and recreation that in twenty twenty.
Yep.
And really at this point, I think just land has become available. And we can. At the Marina. Or green space. To be used by the residents, something to that effect. There's a lot of work obviously to be done and it's not created yet, but it may be in short order. All right, I think we can do that. If um, I don't know that we, we went through the, uh, we, we took uh, some time with the goals and implementation strategies. I tried to just. Replicate what we had agreed upon in our prior meetings into the text there. If you don't mind, in your time, again, this may be done. That. At your own uh, leisure, but. There were some. I couldn't get fully clear around goal, what's now goal five point seven. And we kind of, we, we kind of morphed the Marina facilities goals and strategies. Into all real property. And I'm not sure that I got that exactly right. If you don't mind. Put an eye on those two strategies. And again, I don't think that we need to do it right now because it would be hard to. Look at that and see if you think I got it right. And if not. Send me comments on it. But in short, that's what I did. I, I, I think.
That's it.
Uh. Goals that were intended to, or that were originally directed specifically at the Marina. And made them apply to all real properties. Even more clearly, really deleted altogether. Goal, goal five point seven. Uh, was really talking about controlling the services at the Marina. And I'm, and I've. That was fairly clearly marked out. Uh, but it got a little squirrely for me under the new section, goal five point seven. Any questions on any of that or? Comments?
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
Could just take some time between now and the next meeting, just go over these documents and review them for you?
Yes, I think that would be great.
Okay.
No, I will, I wanted to give a quick update on, um, on the drainage projects that we have going, um, we, we talked about the elevating of the One Way Boulevard path. So you're up to date on that one, on the small project, the, what I call the internal projects. Um, we council did approve, um, a contract to do that construction, was a bit over budgeted, we budgeted five hundred, and I think it was six hundred and fifteen thousand, and they, uh, are gonna proceed with that, um, even, even coming in over budget, uh, and that work should begin in, in early January, and so notices have gone out to the residents adjacent to that work, um, and, and again, just to kind of recap, those are upgrades inside the drainage basins that will ultimately, uh, allow the water to get more efficiently to the out. So there really won't be an immediate improvement seen there, they will kind of, there will be an improvement, but really, it will, those improvements will really, um, show themselves when the ultimate drainage downfall project is done. We, I do think, so that's kind of, we're, we're going well with the, uh, with that project, and I don't want to say that we're having snags with the bigger downfall project, but, um, the, in my opinion, the complications of permitting, and also the complications of crossing the golf course, uh, and the required kind of coordination with Wild Dunes on crossing the golf course, is, is I think, more than maybe I, at least I anticipated. So that is, we are inactive, we just met, um, I think it was Monday with Wild Dunes, and we are gonna meet again next week, we're having, um, and everything's going well, it's just a complicated, situation of shifting easements, widening easements, um, they, they would like for the crossing of the fairway to be piped rather than a, a larger ditch, and I think they pretty well, um, it, it impacts the golf course pretty significantly if it were not piped, so I think that, um, so we're continuing to work through those challenges, um, I think that, that we felt like, um, construction was gonna begin sooner than it, than it looks like it probably will. The city has agreed to borrow the money to do that project, and, and I guess we're still probably at least a year away from being able to start on that. Um, but it's progressing, it's being worked on very hard, it's just more complicated than, I think, at least I anticipated. But it's, it's moving forward. Not as quickly as some of us might like, but it is moving. So that's all I have, any, any questions on the drainage projects?
No.
So, the other thing that you all were working was the, recently, was the lift station amendments to the zoning code. Those were given, um, final reading, a public hearing and final reading, um, last night, I guess, that was to, uh, last night, so those are now enacted. Um, I think that the Water and Sewer Commission is in a position of now wanting to apply for a special exception to get the Seventh Avenue Lift Station approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. I think if they, and, and then I think shortly upon getting that approval, they would close on that property. So that's still moving forward, I wish that, um, any questions on that?
Uh, no.
Yeah.
Um, little thing on my, on the agenda is the MOU, and I, I put this in there for Bill Mills specifically, but it was finally, uh, executed by everybody this month, so that is.
Yay.
That's great.
Uh, congratulations.
Um, so, that's all I have, unless there are any questions for me. Nope.
Nope, not for me.
I just want to make a comment, I've really enjoyed working with all you guys, you've done a hell of a job, and the city is really very blessed to have you out there, you know, working on their behalf, I think it's been really fun, it's, it hasn't been a task at all for me, anyway.
You're gonna be sorely missed, you and Vince and Bill.
But what are we gonna do without our fearless leader, Rick?
That's right.
You'll do very well.
Yeah.
We do have, we do have, um, we have two prior planning commissioners coming back. Um, David Cohen was on the Planning Commission previously, and Sandy Stone was on the Planning Commission previously. Um, and the third, uh, new commission member, last name is Corny, and he is a civil engineer.
That's great. That's really good.
We should get some good, uh, good help, but we certainly will miss Vince and Rick, and we appreciate everything in the years you guys have really, uh, gone above and beyond always to.
Sound a pretty high bar.
Yeah.
Do we do a drive-by parade for him?
We'll see you at the next pump station, Chris.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll stay in touch, guys, we might need your helps.
Yep.
All right.
Anybody have a motion to adjourn?
I'm making, I'm making the motion since I came late. Call it, sir.
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas, y'all.
Thank you again, Rick and Vince.
Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Take care.